Like to call to order the October 26, 2023, Henry County Council. If you'd please stand for pledge and prayer, please. Heavenly Father, we ask that you be with us and that the things we do would be pleasing in your sight, be with the leaders of not only this country but the world. May they follow your advice and the golden rule and fruits of the Spirit and put down their arms as soon as possible. Be with our county, bless it. We have so many good people and things going on. May we be a part of that, in Jesus' name. Amen. Council, you should have received minutes from our regular September council meeting as well as our October 12 special meeting. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Read by Shannon, seconded by Mike. Any questions, updates, corrections? If not, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Approves, passes, six oh. Always have to do a head count. EDC update, Mr. Corey Murphy. Oh, well, who? Okay, you're on.
No, I'll go.
Yeah. Oh, Shannon's on.
So, our June job classification meeting, we left three items unaddressed. I think one unintentionally and two intentionally, and my apologies to our EMA director for skipping right over that one. That was probably the easy one and we got all tripped up on all the hard ones. But I'm going to bring up my notes here with the dollar amounts for that position. And that position is currently making $16,000 and some change. And the recommendation from, and this is a part-time position, so it is a department Wagner Erwin Shealy recommended it be classified as a PAT 1 with an hourly salary of $22.17, is that correct, Tim? Do you remember? Total was $26,000, and I should have had the number. I wasn't prepared. I didn't know we were moving up on the agenda, I'm sorry. I think the total is $26,403 is the recommendation from Wagner Erwin Shealy. My understanding is that a grant was applied for and received for, I believe, $20,000. Is that correct? Yeah, please. Yes.
The position is part-time 12, $40,000 total.
Uh huh.
Then rounded off to $28,000.
Okay.
So this is $28,000 for part-time 1, $12,000 for part-time 2.
And that's how we put it in the budget? Okay.
It's in the budget now.
Yeah, and I think that our intention is to get you to that 28 number beginning January 1 of 2024. So. 26,403. I would like to address that and make that your current wage until January 1. And I can make motions or somebody else can.
I'm having to go.
Okay, I would like to move that we change the EMA director's salary from the $16,000 number to $26,403. And I would like to also include in that motion that we pay those dollars back pay back to the June meeting when that position was skipped mistakenly.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Shannon, seconded by Betsy. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Thank you. I'm sorry, I had these in order as 1, 2, 3, so I know you guys got to go. We'll jump to the payroll HR position.
That passes 6-0.
Oh, sorry, thank you, Kenan. So, the payroll HR position has gone through a little bit of discussions, and I had a personal discussion with Addie Rooker at Wagner Erwin Shealy. And the discussions that she has had with Stephanie ironing out the details of that job description, part of the problem we had before was it was classified differently and the only way we could make anything work was to make it an SO, and we weren't sure we wanted to do that. The discussions with Addie have ended with a recommendation from Wagner Erwin Shealy that that position be a PAT 4, not a PAT 3, which is what we moved it to the last time. And we have three, we have four PAT 4s in the county. One is a current department head, and that's the public health. The other three are the environmental health director and the nursing supervisor, and those two are at a salary of $54,715. The community corrections executive director is at a salary of $55,383. When we changed her salary the last time, we looked at the PAT 3s and addressed it by saying, we have these PAT 3s, this is the highest dollar amount of the PAT 3s, which was, I believe, $51,015 according to the minutes that I had. So what I would recommend we do, and I will move that we change the HR slash payroll administrator's job, was that the right title? I don't have it in front of me. It's close. Change that job to a PAT 4 and pay the same $55,383 as our other PAT 4, that is not the health department head. So that's my motion to pay the $55,383. I would also like to include in that motion that we pay her back pay back to the June date, just like we did for Mr. Welch.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Shannon and seconded by Betsy, that we move that payroll HR position from a PAT 3 to a PAT 4 at the rate of 55,383 and make that retroactive to June after that last job classification meeting. Is there any discussion? If not, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Passes 6-0.
I'd also like to mention, just in passing, that those salaries being retroactive are subject to the 5% wage increase from raises. And so your 26,403 should go to the 28,000 number, which we've already got in the budget. And the 55,383 will go over to what 5% more than that is? The last item that I had left over from job classification was Chief Deputy Josh Smith's position. And we tabled that, and I am of the belief that we need to leave that until we can address the other issue, which I believe will, the question that I asked at our last meeting to get a quote on having Wagner Erwin Shealy do a complete job classification review, sit with all the department heads, redo the job descriptions, and have things lined up so that the point system makes sense with the job classifications from today, not from 2001 or whenever we had those done the last time. I think that I am not comfortable making a change to Deputy Smith's salary until that is worked out to make sure that we have the right classifications in those merit poll positions, and then we can figure it out from there if there is any change at all. So my recommendation, I move that we do not make a change to Chief Deputy Josh Smith's position at this time.
It's been moved, I hear a second?
Second.
I heard two. Susan, I think, was first. Ladies first. So, any questions? The motion was to table until we get a revamp from Wagner.
Not to table, because I don't want to address it again at another meeting, but just to not make a change at this time and be done with it. Well, it was tabled, so it's sitting there. It was tabled at our meeting in June, so I just want to get it off the table.
Subject to revamping from Wagner Erwin Shealy on all the jobs.
Yep, it'll wait with everybody else.
That's coming up probably later in the discussion today.
Yes.
Okay. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Passes 6-0. Anything else before Corey? Corey, you're up.
Good afternoon, council. At your station, you have a notepad, you have a third edition or third printing of our travel guide. It's the same design, but we do short runs, and then the moment we print them is the moment they're out of date. So we make changes, but that is the third printing of our travel guide. Wanted you to have that. Also, if you're headed eastbound out of Indy, the rest stop just past Greenfield, if you pull in there through a partnership with NDOD and the state tourism, they actually gave our office a key to the bulletin boards in there. I don't know what they were thinking, but we have an opportunity to put Henry County information in those bulletin boards, so wanted to make you aware of that as well. There's an event that's going to happen on April 8th, something about the sky getting dark in the afternoon. There was a nice article in the newspaper today. Every time I'm before you, you're going to hear about the eclipse because of the amount of people that are going to come to our county, because we're in the path of totality. And really speaking to businesses, like if you're typically closed on Monday, maybe you don't want to be closed. Maybe you want to order extra food. Maybe you want to order some extra toilet paper. We've looked at other communities in the last total eclipse, and the impact was tremendous. And so we're in the early stages of having an open planning meeting with some guest speakers just to get people thinking about planning. You know, for example, if you're going to host an event and it's outside, where are the people going to go to the restroom? So porta potties are going to be important. And the last time this happened in 2017, there weren't any porta potties in that region, so they had to go out of state to get the porta potties. Never thought I'd be talking about porta potties at the county council. But anyway, moving on. The county redevelopment commission, I sent you an email, but I wanted to bring it to the top of mind. We have our annual presentation to the overlapping taxing districts. That is on Halloween, so Tuesday, October 31st at noon at the conference room of DeFer Varan on Broad Street. You are welcome to attend. We invited all the overlapping taxing districts to come and hear a presentation about our finances and our activity. Finally, I want to close with Ready. I printed this off and put it to your station. You also received an email. As I have reported before, Henry County participates with the East Central Indiana Region or Forge Your Path. So this is a state funding program. It's in its second year. The state has allocated $500 million. We organize ourselves in a region. The region puts together a regional development plan. And so our region has a call for projects. It is open now, and it closes at 5:00 PM on November 17. I've printed off the website where it says submit a project, and then I've also printed off the list of questions. Wanted to make you aware of that. We are working on projects, and I hope others are working on projects as well. I'm happy to assist people. Just give me a call or send me an email. If you have a project idea or maybe somebody watching this out on the interwebs, I'm happy to assist in navigating this process. Any questions from an economic development or tourism before we move into the next item, which is the Food and Beverage Committee?
I just wanted to comment, I think we had at least eight or nine reps last night at Ball State in the Alumni Center for the Ready. I don't recall the name of the consultants that were hired, but they do a nice job, and it looks like a lot of people were there. Probably didn't hurt that they actually served a meal this time. But I think it was very positive and well-received and informative. I know you sat fairly close to me, but they mixed all the tables up so that people from the same county were not at the same table. We had to learn new faces and introduce new people, and overall, I think it was a good evening.
Corey, I've got a question for you. I know that we were disappointed with Ready 1.0, the amount of funding we got for our region, which I believe was, what, 15 million for a lot of counties? What's the strategy difference this time to make sure that we are more successful?
More intentional engagement, which we're seeing that. I'll send you a link in a few days, the PowerPoint that they showed last night at the meeting. It talks about the process and it talks about the extent of community engagement. For example, county stakeholder meetings, over 200 people have participated. Youth survey is close to 1,200 in our region with strong participation from our schools here in Henry County, and adult survey. I think alignment between the state goals and keep performance indicators and our goals. The maximum allocation for a region is 75 million, keeping in mind that the 75 million must be matched or leveraged times four. So that is a limiting factor in some cases. You know, our region did get 15 million, but we have to come up with at least 60 million on a portfolio basis. So, I mean, we're aiming for 75 million, but that's what the purpose of this call for projects is, is to see what's out there and see where we're at on a match perspective. The ideal project capital stack is 20% ready, 20% local, 60% private. Now, not every project has to have that. If you have a project over here that has a tremendous amount of private match, that kind of covers a few projects. But overall, the state wants their 500 million leveraged four times at minimum. To land a plane, we have a different consulting firm, and they were very, very successful in the first round, so we'll see if that magic continues. I'm impressed so far.
That's great. I'm glad to hear that.
Could I also dovetail on it? Apparently, we were able to do that 2020-60 in Henry County. I don't, did we actually get approximately 60% private match?
A lot of the match is coming from the 109 project in terms of just the sheer price of that. We're also benefiting from the portfolio, other projects having larger match.
Okay. I couldn't remember that 2020-60, so I appreciate that. Any other questions about tourism, economic development, Ready?
Food and beverage? So, the Food and Beverage Advisory Committee consists of nine individuals. We were appointed in 2021. I took a look at the statute, and it says that we're appointed for four years. I didn't know the sentence lasted that long. But so each commissioner has an appointment. County council has two appointments. City council has an appointment, the mayor has an appointment, town of Middletown and town of Knightstown. We had an eight-member advisory committee last time or currently. I've sent an email to the advisory committee members saying there's a possibility that we're going to get the band back together again, depending on instruction from you I'll let you know if anybody needs to be reappointed, or, you know, if they're not interested in serving. I have my ideas from a timeline, but I'd really like to hear from the council and the amount. Kenan and I have talked, and, you know, it appears that the amount is somewhere around a million dollars that could be available. I wouldn't, from a timing perspective, I would like to give people plenty of time to fill out an application. We are headed into the holidays, so I would see having a recommendation back to you by the end of February or early March. That would be my personal recommendation.
What would you think or suggest for people who applied last time who weren't chosen? Would you hold their, do we start with their applications, review their presentations?
I think they would probably need to reapply.
One thing that Corey and I, about the only thing we spoke about was might want to reboot, given conversation at our last meeting, we've had, at our last meeting at Wilbur Wright Trails with inflation, the cost of extending the Wilbur Wright Trail through Morland, I believe, had gone up considerably, and they'd asked for monies. And I know other people had asked for money. I know Newcastle Main Street had talked to me and Bobby Plummer, I think, and there's been others. I don't even remember them all because it started in early 2023. I had done a calculation, looking at the last budget report that Debbie sent out. Currently, there's a balance of 1.982 million. There's 76,400 still outstanding from the last round from 2022 that have not turned in or gotten paid for. So that takes it down to 1,900,000, basically rounded. And we're supposed to hold back six months, which is 128,000 because of our revenue bond. And that means there's 1.778 million currently. And as far as local match, was food and beverage leveraged last time on Ready 1.0? I do not recall. Is that part of that 20%?
So there are two.
Anybody remember on the council?
No.
Can you repeat, did you say we only have to hold 128,000?
That is one payment. Two payments would be 256. One payment is every six months. One payment would be 128,000, because I looked up the Baker Tilly report. Two would be roughly 256,000.
How much do we say we bring in each year?
We bring in 58,000 a year since COVID. No, 58,000 a month. We bring in roughly 700,000 since COVID, and divided by 12, that's 58,000 a month.
700,000 a year, roughly?
Yes, that's real close.
When did we finish the last cycle?
It was March, April 2022.
Okay.
Corey, the bill that was passed that kind of put the sunset on food and beverage, I don't want to say we were a poster child for why it was, but the intentions that I heard from the State House was these were put in place to do big projects, and then the tax never went away. And so dollars were accumulating and to do, I guess what I'm getting, and I'm not saying the dollars are here, we've collected them, we need to use them until such time that it sunsets and we don't have it anymore. But would it, what are the pros and cons of putting the band back together and dispersing small amounts here and there versus getting the dollars, letting the dollars accumulate to do a big project five years or so from now? I'm not saying we don't do it, but is there things, I would hate to nickel and dime the dollars away on small projects and go, wow, I wish we didn't do that five years from now because this big project came up, we could do that with those dollars and we don't have them. Just your thoughts?
Historically, the county has let it build and did it every few years. I don't know whether that was right or wrong, but historically, that is what has happened. If we step back and attempt to be strategic from a timing perspective, it would be advantageous to have food and beverage available for Ready projects if needed. But how the approval process of that jives with when the Ready comes together is going to be a bit of a juggling act. Thank you for that phrase, because the regional development plan is due in February. The state will make a funding allocation in April or May, and then the state, so right now, the state says that they will help pick the Ready projects in conversation with the region and the local communities. At the end of the day, the projects that are prepared and shelf-ready or shovel-ready and have the available match are going to be more competitive. And food and beverage in Henry County is a tremendous tool for economic and community development, so trying to align these programs would make some sense from a strategic standpoint. I think the legislature, you know, they were responding to what they thought were bad actors, and I think that we were the very opposite of a bad actor. Very transparent. We could go on a driving tour across the county and say, this has been, this project has benefited from food and beverage, this project has benefited from food and beverage, but for food and beverage, our very quality of life, I think, would be diminished. I think either way, I think either way the county wants to go, we can do good things with that tool. There will always be more requests than funds available. There will always be more requests than funds available. And there will always be some level of dissatisfaction because somebody's project didn't get funded. But our process, I think, goes a very long way of mitigating those factors.
I guess from my standpoint, I'm happy with the timeframe you presented. And I would ask that the, the committee gets back together. I'd like to know the committee's overall recommendation on that question. You know, what, what makes the most sense? Fund these small projects or hold on to things to be able to do something bigger at some point? It's hard when you don't know what something bigger is, but I don't have any problem getting the committee back together. I have any problem with the timeframe, but I would like an answer to that question before we start funding projects.
If, if indeed, we get more, I'm, I've done some quick math here. If we get instead of 15 million, I mean, what did we get last time?
Here in the county?
Yeah.
For Ready?
Yeah.
1.6.
Okay, 1.6. Let's say, I figured if we had 2 million and you needed 15% held back for local, pretending that maybe the county's not the only contributor.
Sure.
I think that's safe to say. We'd need to hold back 300,000 to be a 15% match for 2 million. So, that, that sounds to me like that would be a good thing to do in case we do get an increase. And in case we need local match monies, we would have it. I think Susan's doing some calculations as well, but right now, we have, with what I said earlier, one, basically 1,750,000. We're getting 58,000 per month, so by March, we should have 2 million. And that's holding back a payment, like we're instructed to do. If we hold back 300,000, that's still 1.7. I think you could safely do 1.5 million and have a big buffer of 500,000 left, 300. And if you get more than 2 million, we have 500,000, which would be, we could have 2.5 million, hopefully.
I know last time, when we went through this process, we talked about keeping a bigger buffer. I don't remember all of the discussion, but it is our only, you know, place to tap for certain matches. And so, we could have, we could have done more last time, but chose not to.
And that's one reason, I think, Susan, we have what we have now, because we held back a few hundred thousand and didn't tap it. And I think that's always one, I just agree with you.
So, I don't know if I support giving any of it yet, or if it, if we wait for a recommendation from the group, are we going to do something big? I don't know. I mean, last time, it was a really quick discussion. Someone came and asked for food and beverage money and my comment was just, how are we going to do that process? And so, this feels like it snowballed a little bit before we decided if we were really going to do it and how much money we really wanted to do. But I would be good with a recommendation from the group, too. I just don't know how I personally feel about if we should launch the committee or not.
I, can we get the group together and ask them that question before we start accepting applications? This came about because we've had a, a few folks come to the council wanting food and beverage money. And it's easy to come and ask for that and it's easy for us to say, oh, we got a committee for that. But I think I'd like to have their recommendation on what I ask before we decide how much money, if any, we're willing to put into any program.
I just wanted to make sure that with the comment I made last time, we didn't start giving food and beverage money away and forget that people had asked before that had been denied and set those requests aside and then start working on new requests, because we had a lot of great projects come through last time, so.
Do you feel like you have a clear direction or would you like a clearer direction?
No, now he has no direction. He had, he has less direction now than when he came.
I've got enough branch to run on.
Okay. Well, one of your committee members was our speaker at Kiwanis. And she happened to allude to one of the many things that she served on was the food and beverage and that that hasn't come up and shouldn't for a while. And I said, you haven't gotten your email from Cory yet, have you? And she looked at me like fear. So, I don't know if it was a painful process for the committee last time. I, I hope not, but they did a, they did an outstanding job.
It is a significant time commitment.
Right.
And it is, it's a big job.
And I know last year, we changed the dollar amount kind of halfway through, too, so let's not do that again.
That was, ended up being a good thing.
Yeah, it did.
But we extended the deadline as well. I'm. Any thoughts from this end of the room?
So, Claire's Mud?
Yeah.
Okay, we're good at that.
Okay. So, when will you meet in November? Is that normal?
It's 30th, because the third, the, the fourth is on Thanksgiving, so we're actually meeting on the fifth.
Okay.
Thursday.
All right. So, I'll try to have a meeting with the Food and Beverage Committee before your next meeting and...
Or if you can get them all to respond via email to that question, that'd be really easy. But if they're not seeing your email about starting, that might be a problem.
Well, they may have set my email up to go to spam. Thank you.
Thank, thank you. Chamber, Shonda? Shonda here? No. Anybody from Chamber? Hmm, no. Okay, moving on.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I would like to suggest that we ask Mr. Mahoney to go next and not...
I was just about to suggest that Mr. Mahoney go next. In fact, I arrowed it up there. Mr. Mahoney, so you don't have to wait the next 45 minutes. Okay, so we're talking, looking at a request to transfer funds of $3,000 from the line item pre-trial diversion extradition to pre-trial diversion part-time line. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Betsy?
Second.
Second by Mike? Any discussion? If not, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Passes 6-0. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. A fairly meager request compared with some. Okay, I have ordinance 2023-8 and I'm trying to find it because I have several written. This is an ordinance modifying the matrix pay for merit deputy sheriff. I have several. Can you clarify for me, Shannon? Because I know you've worked hard doing calculations and spreadsheet, can...
So, ironically, I don't see the ordinance laid out here in paper. Okay, they've got it. Um, what you are looking at, several, is the longevity. We're looking at the matrix one. So, they're going to hand those out. And this is just the more, the matrix modification that we voted on at our last meeting. We kind of discussed that, told, voted on what we wanted to do. And, and then we said, Joel, please make this official. So, Joel put this in the form of a ordinance, ordinance number 2023-8. And we have that document in front of us. So, I would move that we formally approve ordinance number 2023-8.
Second.
Okay, I, I heard a, a motion to approve this ordinance number 2023-8. Was there a second? I did not hear it. Susan? Questions or comments? It moves to 2,500 every four years?
Five years.
Five, oh, that's right. It's every five years. The average in the state is four years. So, and it maxes out at 15,000 after thirty?
Thirty years.
Thirty years. And most that you research in the states, shorter timeframe than 30 years. So, I think my conversation with you, this was kind of in the middle of the state, not at the high end or low end. We were at the low end. Okay. It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Did everybody vote? Okay. Passes 6-0.
You want me to do the longevity one, too?
Yeah, well, this one has many sheets, so you're going to have to explain. I've studied them, but I, I don't, I can't speak for all other council members. 2023-9.
2023-9 has many different flavors. And because we, we voted at our last meeting to increase longevity from $200 to $300 with a maximum of 1,000 up to a maximum of 1,500. And after that meeting, some things came into question about whether or not that would go into effect in November of 2023 or November of 2024. And then, I was also asked, what is the average on longevity around the state? And I had some documentation. Stephanie provided some documentation. The average around the state for longevity is closer to $2,500 maximum with the $500 per year. And so, what I presented to with you, to you, and, and thank you to Joel for drafting these, even though I went through and copied, copied a little, the little spreadsheet piece into all those ones and named them differently. All the language is the same. The dollar amounts changed in there. And I, I tried to get as many options as possible. However, I'm not sure I got all the options.
I think you had plenty.
There were plenty, there were plenty of options, however, um, one, there's six options, but when I looked through there, I did not include just a single change to the, uh, to the median effective in 2023. I have one, a change to the median effective in 2024. But I do not have those effective 2023 for just a single option. So, what you see in front of you is several optional ordinances to go 300 with a 1,500 max in 2023 and then change that to 400 with a 200, or $2,000 max in 2024. And then you can look at those options and move through them. And like I said, there's a few options that just didn't, didn't make it in. We would have had nine options if I had done it that way. But I, I, I wanted to be prepared so we had an ordinance to vote on and approve. So, that's the, the gist of those ordinances and I will turn it back to you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you for the gist. I, I don't know if all councils are aware. It was touched upon, I think, at our September meeting that longevity is paid out in November. So, the reason we really need to make a decision today is if we decide to up the... The one I'm looking at has what we talked about at the last meeting. For 2023, move it to 300, maxing out at 1,500. So, that actually would go out this year in November.
And I think that's, we're capable of doing that in November, correct, Stephanie?
And then, I'm also looking at the one that, well, I'm looking at two. I'm looking at the 400 that maxes out at two and I'm looking at the 500 that's 25. The difference is, you know, we just spoke about the matrix, which is every five years and tops out after 30. Longevity is every, kicks up every three years and tops out at 15. So, that's the difference, if I'm, understand what I've studied the last few days. I normally don't do this. I would suggest that we look at the 300 now, like we talked about at the last meeting and let somebody else talk about the either 400 maxing out at 2,000 or the 500 maxing out at 2,500 for 2024.
I'd like us to end up at the 2,500 max out with 500, the 500, 2,500. And if we leave it what we decided at 300 previously, I'm okay with that. But I want us to end up at that median.
I mean, I'm looking at all of these. I, I know we want to get our employees paid. Is, I assume we can afford the 500 up to 2,500?
Yes.
I would move that we...
Yeah, we, we can afford that because we've been frugal the last four years.
Right.
This is the first year we could talk about being up for this.
I would move that we adopt the most generous one, which would be starting at 500, ending at 2,500. Starting in November 2023.
Okay, so you're looking at the one I'm looking at, which goes 300, 600, 900, 1,200, 1,500 for this year.
No, she's looking at the last one that is, it says 500,000, 1,500, 2,500, 2,500. It's only got one column in it. It says amending longevity pay option 500 at the very bottom of the page. And she has modified it to instead of starting in 2024, start in 2023.
I'll second.
Okay. She's looking at the one of the six I'm having here. Hold on.
That's right.
Yes, it says 20...
The only difference is I would make it more immediate than, rather than wait a year.
Okay, so you're changing the 2024 and beyond to 2023 and beyond. It's 500,000, 1,500, 2,000, 2,500 in the three-year increments. It's been moved and seconded. Any other discussion? If none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Passes 6-0. Now, we still have a few more things to do. Let me get the six longevities out.
Of course, that's going to be one that I didn't modify and send. So, do you, do you need us to make that change and... If I send you that, Stephanie, can you print it? And then you'll change it?
Yeah.
Okay. Perfect, thank you.
I'll talk about the longevity one we just passed. Okay. I'm trying to see which one we can go to next. Opioid is... Everyone have the opioid ones? Some of us came to you in the 11th hour. This is, County Council approves expenditures of revenues received from the settlement of claims against opioid manufacturers and distributors as set forth in Exhibit A, previously approved by the Board of Commissioners. I listened to that. That was last night. I listened to it after the Ready meeting in Ball State. But that was passed last night. Abatement share funds received by Henry County, Indiana, as a result of the settlement shall be used for the following purposes. shall be used for the following purposes. Now, um, help me with my memory. Some of these we already, one and two?
One and two.
Yeah, we did one and two. Thank you. Because those looked awfully familiar from, from September. So number three is new. It's the sum of up to $130,000 to assist Hope Initiative Incorporated in acquisition of a property that in Henry County to be used for transition housing for females who have completed the JCAP program and have been released from custody for the renovation of property and for use as transition housing and for the staffing and operation of the property. And number four would be a sum of $12,712.50 for the acquisition of licensing of, quote, "a new direction," unquote, educational programming materials for use in JCAP. I've served on the Hope Committee for number three, which is the women's transitional housing. And thus, I am going to abstain because I'm on that board that's been working on that. So we'll entertain somebody besides me making a motion to approve.
Mr. Chairman, we're trying to get copies of this ordinance. We don't have it.
Oh, you don't have it?
No.
No.
Oh, I am so sorry. Somehow I did. I think I copied it from something I got.
I...
I've got the copy here. If somebody could copy. Okay. And we can move on while you're doing that to another one. Or you, you guys flipped your coin. I'm going to move on to the inter-local agreement. That was also, I listened last night, was also relating to 911. This new agreement is pursuant of the passage of the PSAP. Do you have copies of this? Okay, good. It's between Henry County and Newcastle. Approval of their respective fiscal bodies entered to this agreement on the E911 system in Henry County. The purpose is to outline respective duties and management of the parties in operation and maintenance of the E91 for Henry County. Contract will take effect January 1, 2024. It's one year, but renewable. There's an advisory board that is mentioned on Page Two. Boards shall be made up of the following, which is outlined on Page Three. The terms, all appointments shall be made for one calendar year. Each appointing authority shall notify the city and county of appointments on or before January 1 of each year. Meetings are held by the appointing, by any member of the appointing authority. One change that was made last night, the board shall appoint one communication director. The communication director shall fill that position in accordance with approved job description. The city and county agree that there will be 10 full-time dispatchers, and the correction was six part-time dispatchers and one system administrator and supplemental part-time dispatchers. 911 center shall be the department of the county, managed and operated under the sole supervision of the county. Any questions? This is signed by representatives from both the city and, and the county. And I believe the Board of Commissioners have already signed the copy that I have. Yes? Questions? Comments? Motion?
Move to approve.
Moved by Susan?
Second.
Second by Betsy. Any questions, discussion? If not, all in favor of this inner cooperation agreement over 911, please say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Passes six zero. But you might be interested, is what I said then. And we're hoping, as Jason Simler said, we get monies in January. We've been assured of that. We will find out. Now I think we're ready. Thank you, ladies. I'm ready for the opioid, I believe. Yes. Okay, I already read it. I'm going to give you time to read over it. My apologies, I assumed, which is always dangerous, that you all had copies. And the all comes from my wife, who is from Texas. And it's her birthday. I just throw that in while you're reading. But she's in Texas for her birthday. Deep in the heart.
I'm pleased to see that there is money allocated for transitional housing for women. I know that that's something we are really sorely lacking in our community. Jamie Owens, does she run the guest house? What is her position?
She's the JCAP.
Oh, she's JCAP, okay.
Women's Director over the women's. She performs the women's program out at the correctional facility.
Excellent.
And those two, from everything I've seen and attending two of the three graduations, do an outstanding job. And it's making a difference. It does, from every indication, it's making a positive difference. This would be similar to the guest house. We have transitional housing for males. This would be something we don't have in Henry County, which would be transitional housing to improve their chances of assimilation into a normal lifestyle and into the community successfully.
I know that JCAP has been overall around the state extremely successful, and I know I've only heard really good things about our own. Do we have any data or metrics to show that it might be reducing recidivism?
I think it's early. We visited Dearborn County, and it was two years into the program before they hired IU to do a data analysis. I think it's premature. It's only a year old.
I assume so.
Probably after another year, that might be a possibility.
That'll be fun to see.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the, I guess, I just see...
Items three and four?
I don't, yeah. And I don't, I don't know that there's an ordinance in number associated with it, but I move we approve items three and four to Exhibit A.
Okay, it's been moved by Shannon.
Second.
Seconded by, I think, Susan. You're very soft spoken today, Susan.
Second.
Okay, that I heard. It's been moved and seconded. Any questions? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Not opposed, nay? Passes six zero. Thank you. Now, this one is ARP, correct? We're on ARP.
Yeah, we don't have a copy of that either.
This has truly been a last, a lot of things happening in the last three days. Before I have you, someone make copies. Are we looking at just number 29 and 30 or just number 30?
Thirty, thirty-one.
Thirty and 31. I can read them or we can make copies? It's just one page out of this? I'll read them so that we're not, got a big pause in the operation. And then, um, it just depends on my accuracy of readership. Number 30, the sum of $455,000 for the acquisition of vehicles and ancillary equipment to be allocated as follows. A, the sum of up to $110,000 for the emergency medical services to acquire two SUVs. B, the sum of $60,000 for weights and measures inspector. C, the sum of $85,000 for the emergency management agency. D, the sum of $200,000 for the Henry County Sheriff's Department. That's item 30. 31, the remaining sums received from the coronavirus fiscal recovery fund shall be utilized for the repair and improvement of county-owned buildings. That is what you're going to get a copy of momentarily. And I think I read it accurately because I was very slow and intentional.
Would anyone like to wait until they get the paper copy for a motion? Okay.
Sheriff, it's 200,000. Oh, repair, uh, I, well, hold on. I don't know. There was 5,700,000 to Geo, a bond, and the last time I knew, there was several million, 4.5 million, 5 million for Justice Center and Masonic, I think.
We have two commissioners present. Do you guys know the outstanding amount of the ARP for the buildings?
For the two buildings.
We know it's the remainder. The question was asked down there about what the dollar amount was, if you had, or off the top of your head.
I'm going to say minus, I don't know that this dollar total has come out, but it's roughly 4.9 or 5 million dollars. Is that right? Somewhere around in there.
Yeah, well, good guess. Okay. It was in the range, I said, from last time. It hasn't changed really because I think you're getting quotes and bids and options and from what I picked up in last night's, listening to last night's meeting. I do have it. You're clairvoyant, too. Okay, you have a copy of what I read. So we'd entertain a motion as soon as you feel comfortable that I read correctly.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move that we adopt the ARP resolution as presented.
It's been moved by Shannon and seconded by Mike. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Passes six zero. Any comments from the public? Most of the public, except a young man in the back, is county officials. Um, 65,000 was voted on for the budget. Do we have an update for that?
No, 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 no. I was under the understanding that it had to come in a new ordinance from the commissioners. The six, for the used vehicles. But we still expect it to, it's still in process? Okay.
Your next meeting's on a day sec... Okay. Does that answer your question?
Are you able to go ahead with the purchase without this final ordinance?
Okay. Some of which I was not aware.
Just I, I left, when I listened to the commissioners' meeting, it sounded like they had been identified, like they might lose them if they didn't move forward.
It is not until the 30th, so... Yes, given that information, it's up to the council to...
So I make the motion to amend the ARP ordinance to include the $65,000 pending the commissioner's approval for the purchase of the used vehicles.
Second. Seems logical.
Somebody said something. It's been moved by Susan and seconded by Betsy. Any other questions, comments?
It just saves time. Get, get our officers better cars.
Okay. If there is none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Passes six zero. Anything else from the public? Susan Sun?
Mr. Chairman, we still have the WIS study as well, the Wagner Women's Health Study.
Oh, that's right. It didn't get on my agenda. Well, while you're up there, sure.
And this is really a public service announcement. Habitat for Humanity is doing a women's build home. We had the first meeting, I think it was Monday or Tuesday night. I don't remember which night it was, Monday or Tuesday night. So anybody who wants to be a part of it can contact Habitat, contact me. I'm trying to think who else was there. Jennifer, oh, Jennifer's not here. Jennifer Scott was there. But if anybody is interested, the build will start in May. But if anybody is interested, please, I was going to announce it last night and forgot. So, women's build Habitat for Humanity.
Gene Sewell still involved with Habitat? I thought he was. We've built some ramps together. Nice, nice man. Yes, it's not on my itinerary, so have at it because I do have a handout for it, and I don't know who else does.
Yeah, I think there was one put at each spot. The, and I got to find it on my, here it is. We weren't sure we were going to have this for today, but when I talked with Addie, she said if we needed it for today, she would get it for us. And at our last meeting, um, gosh, three weeks ago or whatever it was, two weeks ago, we, we asked Stephanie to solicit a quote or a bid to engage in a complete reevaluation of our job classification system, review job descriptions with department heads, do the number reassignment, define all the categories, and expand those categories and even separate some things out if we need to. And I think that is one of the root causes of one of the problems we've had trying to fit job descriptions into job classifications and struggling with it and making SOs because we didn't have a proper category for them to fit in. This proposal came to us, was it this morning or last night? I don't remember. But, yeah, so we, the, the estimate to do the work is $44,640 plus expense reimbursement, and you can look through that. I took a guess at it before, which was $40,000. I was off a little bit. But the most important thing that was presented to me was you got to get in the queue to get this done. It'll take six to eight months to get it finished. And if we engage with them to do this, then we can get that queue spot for early in 2024. They could start that work and hopefully have it finished by budget time next year. So I reached out to two other organizations today that I was given as possibilities to do this kind of work. Both of them said they, they are not capable of doing it in 2024, and they wouldn't be able to give us a price because they don't have our complete structure. They don't know where it is and where we need to go. They would have to do additional work to review everything. So they sent us this letter of engagement that would get us on the queue, and we can move forward with doing this in 2024 and try and get some of the root causes fixed to our job classification system that has been in place so long. So open that up for discussion, Mr. Chairman, and I would also seek legal advice on who has to sign that. So she was going to check the queue position. She said it would be December or January. So, thank you. So we would need to make certain that we could allocate those dollars and send this to the commissioners for, for approval of the letter of engagement. Okay, thank you.
I, I made the decision four years ago not to put my hat in the ring on job classification, not for any particular reason other than I was on enough committees and liaison positions.
I tried that, you remember, right?
I've, no, I've, I've leaned heavily on the recommendations from the job classification, the three of you that currently...
I think adopting this contract, I know the commissioners have to ultimately sign for it, but I think this is going to save us a ton of headaches for the future. This just, it just needs to get done.
I am definitely in favor of it also.
I'm definitely in favor of it. I mean, if we don't put...
It's just going to get worse.
So I would move that we send this contract to the commissioners for approval and also vote to fund it?
Fund it from...
That was going to be my question.
From general fund dollars. We'll have to do an additional appropriation when the bill comes through. And I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved by Betsy, seconded by Susan. Discussion? My only discussion, I, I usually don't question 5 to 10,000 because I know we have that buffer. I, again, I lean on the job classification and your experience and knowledge that this will be worth $45,000 in your opinion for those who sit on and have to go through. You know, I discount the June meeting because you had way too big agenda for an hour. So, yeah, it was a whatever show, but it was because it was set up to be, it should have been a two-hour meeting, and in retrospect...
Yeah, we had no idea what we were walking into that day.
Well, yeah, and I, hindsight's 2020, but I don't know that that's the reason for doing this. The reason for doing this would be a historical reason well before June of 2023, but I'm hearing those who sit on the job classification, you feel like this will be money well spent and give the desired results.
I feel like it's become too difficult to assign a correct wage to somebody, and if we don't try to improve the job classification accuracy and make a wage plan moving forward, then I see it as being increasingly difficult to assign correct wages to people.
And this will be a review of job descriptions as well, I read?
Yes, they'll sit with each department.
Which is past due.
Way past due.
Okay. That's my discussion. It's been moved and seconded. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Passes 6-0.
I will also just mention that they've kind of got a head start on it with Angela's department, so that's one that we don't really have to do at all, and that was included in the, that was identified when I spoke with Addie. And other groups that I talked to, they wouldn't, they wouldn't even give me a price. They couldn't do it next year, but they indicated that they would have to start from ground one and learn exactly how we do things today and how it is before they could start over and reinvent the wheel. It may be, may have been well worth it to do that, but I feel like Wagner-Winshili has done what they've done for us so far, and they've got a head start on trying to get there. I think they have recommended that we do this in the past, and we have not, because we didn't have the money to do it. But you guys have all been witness to the results of not doing it, so.
Okay, well, outside agency, we'd be paying mightily for their learning curve that Wagner, Irwin, and Shealy already have. And I think Mandy from EMS also has a report from Wagner-Winshili as well. What's the status of that, Mandy? Is it in progress? Okay. And I don't sign, but is, what's the status of yours, Angela? I didn't read, you got yours.
Yeah, I purposely did. I really did. I was about to do a bunch of other...
Right, good. So they're, they're well on the way, and that's passed. Comments from the public or officials? Out of habit, I probably did. There's one abstention of that. Thank you. Yes, thank you. That is correct. Because of my involvement, I did abstain, and I just rattled off 6-0, 6-0, 6-0. I was that dog with a Pavlov hat on the cage, so.
Motion to adjourn.
Yeah, adjourn.